All right, this is the OGAAT Committee Meeting of July 9th, 2020. I'm the Chairman Saul Silverstein. We have our Coordinator Ron Davis, Recording Secretary Marlene Silverstein, Assistant Coordinator Chris Kelly, Mike Muddit, Committee Member Gary Del Piano, Committee Member, and via phone, our other Committee Member Tina Magyar. So you've all been sent the agenda. First item is any questions or comments?
None.
None, okay. Next item is to approve the minutes of the June 4th, 2020 meeting. I've sent you all the minutes. Gary moves to approve them.
Second.
Who is the second?
I second it.
Either or.
Tina gets it, okay. Take a second to review. Are we ready to vote?
I'm ready.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, thank you very much. The meeting minutes are approved as written. The next item on the agenda is the budget. So the budget report that I sent out is dated June 18th. The reason it is not dated June 30th or July 1st is because the town is switching accounting systems as of July 1st. They're moving from a program called Phoenix to a program called Munis. And so they sent us a report on June 18th and said, this is the last report you're gonna get. I asked Corinne Monday if she had a report on the new system, and she says they were still working it. And the first thing they were gonna do is pay bills and stuff, and payroll and stuff like that. And July is usually tough for them to generate our report anyway because they're usually setting up for the new fiscal year. So what you have here is the last report we could get dated June 18th on the old system. I don't think there's anything unusual. Shows that Chris, Chris, you overran your budget.
Why did you roll out?
Not much, a couple hundred bucks. There was still money left in every other account. Basically, we had a balance of 4278, but that's not true because we had some outstanding encumbrances. We should have pretty much used up all of the all of the miscellaneous supplies and expenses, actually. I think we targeted using that all up and...
There's no reason we can't use the grant funding for Chris, right?
No, in the past, we have used grant funding for for personnel. We targeted the grant funding this year for the ad hoc camera people.
Right, there's 391 left in that. I mean, that could cover Chris's overage.
So yeah, it could be probably used for that. But normally, the town, they can move, there's enough money, extra money left around so they can move it around and we'll be all right. So we shouldn't have to worry about that. So I think we're all right on the budget, actually. We, we, we should have pretty much used it all up, period. Any questions on that?
Oh, looks good.
Okay, next item is the Coordinator's report. So program-wise, there is, there's a running tally on the second page, and there were some errors in the April and May reports that I picked up as I was printing, getting this thing ready to print. So I corrected those. And so the April and May numbers will look different than the previous Coordinator Reports, but these are now correct. We basically ran 189 programs during the year. For the Player Hits Report for June, on Discover, there were 157 live hits, 229 VOD hits. And for YouTube in June, Chris hasn't quite figured out yet if he's able to separate out VOD hits from live stream hits on YouTube. So the YouTube numbers are total of live stream and VOD hits of 369. And the table of June program hits and May program VOD hits, that same problem shows up, but it's labeled specifically Discover VOD and YouTube VOD and Live. So we're getting a lot of hits on YouTube, I'll tell you that. Where you see like, just a few hits on Discover, you see like, over 100 are on certain programs.
Same with me.
Yeah, so in any event, things are all right. For the rest of, the rest of the report, the written portion of the report, basically, not much happened in June because the town is still, you know, trying to be cautious due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So basically, official board meetings and other meetings were held virtually, and we covered as many of them and streamed them live as we could. And no Town Talk episodes were produced. The OGAAT studio was pretty much closed for the month. And Chris, I think, did everything pretty much remotely in June. The only thing that changed was in July, last night, the Board of Selectmen had a live meeting in Town Hall. All the participants wore masks. They were spaced pretty far apart around the desk. Chris was in the control room. And not having done any live broadcasts for a while, there were some teething problems last night with audio. I think Chris worked his way through it, got the audio up partway into the program so they could be heard on Channel 79. It was very low volume. It got a little bit loud. He adjusted it upwards. It was better on the internet, and it's something that he's gonna look into some more and work during July for any other meetings that are broadcast live from Town Hall.
I think it's a little rusty because of the two-month shutdown.
Yeah.
I was really used to streaming on Zoom, and then it was quite a switch-up.
And after nothing, Zoom's audio, the dynamic audio is really pretty good.
Yeah, it's very sophisticated.
Okay, any other questions on Coordinator's report?
Motion to approve.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the report.
I make a motion.
Okay. Tina, second by Mike. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Unanimous, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is action items. So the open action items, there were three. The first one is finding the missing parts for that Steadicam. We're gonna, that's gonna be taken care of by just ordering a new stabilizing device with CAC grant funds. So that'll go away in a couple of months. Police Academy, Town Talk, no progress due to distancing, and that hasn't changed this month. And the last item was to add a procedure for recording and broadcasting virtual meetings on Zoom to the OGAAT Procedures Book. And Chris sent me something just before the meeting, or a few hours before the meeting. I started to look through it. I do have some comments I'd like to discuss with Chris separately that we don't have to go through that with the meeting. So that is...
Yeah, I read through that too. I think Chris did a good job on that.
Yeah, my basic comment was, you have to, when you write these things, you have to think like you're talking to someone who knows absolutely nothing. So you may say, you know, press, you know, start, start the video, but you then have to tell them how to start the video, you know? Press the button in the lower left-hand corner of the screen or something like that, you know? If they're not familiar with Zoom, they might not realize how to start recording a video. And there was, the other issues had to do with like, you say, go to the Zoom server or something, and you don't give the URL till a little bit further down the page. I think the URL belongs right where you give the instruction. But I'm offline about that stuff. It's that general kind of stuff. It looked good otherwise. I didn't get a real in-depth view of it because I didn't have the time, but I will, I will take another look at it. And that's why I want to discuss it after I really look at it.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate the comments.
So that's it for the action items. The next item, which is probably gonna take the bulk of the meeting now, is the CAC grant. So Chris sent a spreadsheet of the items we talked about last week, plus some additional items. And I added a couple items at the bottom, which I may not go with grant funds. They may go with OGAAT funds, but I'll tell you why later. So there's several sections. The first section is subscriptions, and that's where we have four different options. We have what's called an Arcus subscription with Discover Video that, that in the past has covered both video on demand and live stream. Gary, you have a question?
Yeah, are we talking about the 2020 CAC Grant R6 XL?
Actually, R7.
We're up to R7.
Okay.
I sent the R7 out.
Okay, that's why I was looking because I didn't know. I'll download, okay, because I didn't see that when I'm downloading it now. So it's gonna take a minute to get it. Okay, you can start, you can, I can...
Yeah, all right, so the first, the first section is these renewals. So Arcus renewal would be with Discover Video. Now, in the past, that covered live stream and video on demand, but Discover is no longer gonna have video on demand. So I asked Chris, as you remember, the last meeting, to check whether or not they had other options, and they did. They have, what they were offering us in place of what we used to have for the same price was extra bandwidth of 2,600 gigabytes. Chris got also quotes for 1,300 gigabytes and 260 gigabytes. So we have those three options. The prices dropped from $21.49 to $12.49 to $4.49, depending on which of those levels you take.
And what did we decide that we needed for bandwidth?
We need the, out of those three options, we want the middle one.
The middle one, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
1,300, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So the fourth option is to just forget about this. If we, if we do, if we go with Discover, then we have no VOD except on YouTube. And we can use it on VOD. What?
YouTube has the higher numbers, and it appears that
Yeah.
ultimately, if it goes the way it's appearing to go, we'll get ones and twos on Discover and thirties and forties on YouTube.
Yeah.
Seems to me we should just go to YouTube.
Well, I just want to make one comment to that. I don't think that Discover's counts are an accurate representation of, because they're getting rid of their VOD. They're, they're not supporting it, and I'm not really promoting it as much as YouTube because a lot of functions are not working. They're not fixing things that are broken, so...
When do we get out of it? When do we get out of it?
Well, they're getting rid of it, so...
We're not, we have no choice. We're getting out of it. The question is, do we go with them for the live stream portion at 1,300 gigabytes, or do we now go with Telview, who will give us both live stream and video on demand? But that's at a cost because we have to buy some new equipment and install some new software, and so it, and now it's a whole switchover. And the cost of that item would be $14,787 just for that, and then that does not include the Telview Care, right? There's still, there's a separate line item for Telview Care for the...
Right, but we don't, just remember that we don't, we're not, that 14,000 is, that's the entire total of that quote. And we're only looking for a, I think we're only looking to spend the 3,000 for that subscription and the 4,000 for the device itself. And then I think it's, so that's like around $7,000 right there. So it's not really 14,000 because that's including closed captioning and the Roku and the Apple TV, all that stuff.
Yeah, and I mean, the 4,000 goes away next year. I mean, I think I probably agree with Ron and Saul that it's probably time to go, and I think probably Gary as well, but it's probably time to go YouTube. The only thing we just have to be aware of, right, is that if YouTube, and I don't think this is gonna happen in 2020, decides to say, you know what, we're limiting content to 30 minutes, or, you know, some arbitrary thing that breaks our ability to really put video on demand on there, or they try to charge or something, that we'll have to come up with a solution possibly for the year after, right? Because we don't necessarily have the funds to go back and ask for a video on demand service midway through the year. So, I mean, the only thing that video on demand's completely gotten rid of is, I mean, Ron used to have to run copies of DVDs to Town Hall for lawyers and stuff with video on demand. I'm pretty sure that disappeared. So we don't really do that service anymore because you can just go to the internet and get the video.
I realize what you just said, Mike, is very apropos because when we first experimented with YouTube well before we had Discover, we were putting things on YouTube, but then they limited the program length on us to like 10 minutes.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, after we got Discover, a few years after we got Discover, all of a sudden, they opened it up. You could put whatever you wanted up there. So what you say may, could actually happen. They could go back and say, no, no more long programs. You're limited to, you know, half hour, something like that. So that's, that's a risk. So the question is, we'll probably have YouTube anyway. Should we go with Telview? Buy this other piece of equipment and the software that's needed for just that without the Apple TV and the Roku TV and all that stuff? And not use Discover?
Well, I'm just thinking about the people that are trying to watch our stuff, and they have to go to, one guy just watched this, and they go to YouTube to watch something else. I just think it's gonna be confusing to votes.
Well, here's, I like the idea of having two, two platforms. I think, I think YouTube itself is just, it's just risky. I think it's risky. I think, like, we're, we're putting the integrity of our VOD at risk because of something that's pretty much out of our control. And I think it's important, I mean, if we have the funds, I think it's important to preserve our own proprietary storage.
Ron, your comment was they would have to go to different places. They have to go to different places today. They have to click on two different links, and that would not change. They would have to click on two different links on the town website or wherever they do it. So I don't, I don't think that's really an issue.
I don't either.
You basically go to the town website, you go to OGAAT page, click on link for live, click on link for, for VOD, and there's even a third link there, click on link for YouTube. So it's really different than what they're doing today. It's just, the link is different, but they still have the same procedure to follow.
I, I agree. I think that, I don't think the links have anything to do with it because they, nobody has the link memorized. They either go to the webpage or they save it. And if, and if we make it clear to them that, you know, our link has changed, and we give them time to, you know, re-save it, then it shouldn't make a big, big, big deal of difference. As for, as for the YouTube thing, I think we should use YouTube as long as we can, but I, but the... But I think that we should make the move towards this Telview thing, and then we can, we can, you know, add to it down the road. I mean, if it was $14,000 and we had to put all that out at one time, I would say, you know, maybe we shouldn't. But for $7,000, and, and, and we're, and hopefully, we'll get the money from, well, we wouldn't do it if we don't get the money from CAC, you know? So, you know, that's, that's how it comes down to it. That's what it comes down to, I think.
Correct.
My opinion.
That brings something up. I'd like to say that we're talking thousands here and thousands there. But for the public that's watching us, we're talking about money that is given to us in grants. We're not using the town's money to do these things.
Hey, thanks for reminding the home audience of that.
That is correct.
No, it's important.
Yeah, we would not do it. We would not do it if we don't get the grant.
Right, that's what I, that's what I said.
Exactly.
And, and we're not going to the town of Orange to try and get that $7,000. I mean, certainly, this money is money that comes out of money that you pay every month for your, for your optimum subscription. And it comes back to the town, a certain amount of it. There's, there's a number of different towns that share in this amount of money. But anyway, that's sort of the shortness, short of it.
All right, so my sense is, the sense of the committee is we go with Telview, but we don't, we only go for the things needed for live stream and VOD. And there was something else in there that you wanted. What we're not gonna get is, we're not gonna get the closed captioning option. We're not gonna get the Apple TV and the Roku TV. But there is other things in there. I just pulled the grant, the quote up. So we need the Telecast 2, which is the $4,200 device that actually gives us the access to the Telview. We don't need Fire TV, the video captioning, the Apple TV or the Roku app. We do need Connect, the adaptive bitrate. Freebit, right? We do need Connect Cloud Cast Streaming Workflow.
Yep.
And we do need Connect CMS.
Yes.
And then there's some setup charge or shipping charge that they offer. And there will, there is also, and I don't remember if you put, I think you put it in the quote, quote for Telview Care, the warranty on that piece of equipment.
So I didn't put, okay, I didn't put the numbers in. What I should have done was added that. But what I can say is, the first, first year of Telview is free.
It's not, it's not free. It's included in the price.
It's actually included.
All right, the first year of Telview Care is...
It's not visible in the price, though.
Some reason why. No charge.
Is, year one is 15% of the price of the equipment or something like that, and then year four or year five, it's like 7% or something like that?
Yeah, it drops.
It drops, yeah. Yeah, year two, it goes from 15% of the value of the $4,200 down to 7.5% in the fifth year, and it's a linear drop. So, yeah, so we can, we can get a formal quote if you don't have it already on that piece of equipment. What you'll need to do, Chris, for me to put this grant request in, if we're going, you'll have to get a new quote, just the items we want, and have the Telview Care to the bottom of the quote.
Yes, and then what I wanted to mention is, I talked to Charles today, and he, he mentioned and reminded that we have until, I think, 2024 on our current Telview Care, right?
Okay, go ahead.
So what I think we're gonna do, and I think what makes sense, is to purchase Telview Care up until that expiration date. Because we want, we want everything to kind of end at the same time. We want to keep everything in sync.
Yeah, that, that date comes about because when we bought that last server from them, we had time left on the service contract on the old server. And they took that extra time and wrapped it into the new Telview Care and extended the warranty out like 16 months or something like that, which is why, why we have till somewhere in 2024, whatever that, that date is.
So what I'm gonna recommend is we, you know, we basically purchase enough Telview Care to make, to meet all those, all those same expiration dates. So I think, I think that's what was, we're in 2020 right now. We're halfway through 2020, so it'd be, what, like, three years? Three or, three and a half years?
Yep, seems reasonable.
Something like that. And then, so the first year would be free, and then second, second year is 15%. Third year is like 12.5% of the price. The, so, and we're talking about the, the telecast and that audio upgrade, which is $1,000, so it's around $5,000. You know, the 15% of 5,000, and then 12.5 second year and, you know, 10%.
Can't we just, can't we just roll this over onto this new Telecaster?
Oh, you mean, take some of the, some of the time that we already have and transfer?
Exactly.
We have less time? That's up to you guys. I will let you guys decide that.
One quick question.
Are we using both machines?
Yes, so this one's for video on demand. The other one is for our broadcast, two different boxes.
Okay, so this one doesn't do all of the services. You're gonna have two machines running all the time.
Right.
I didn't understand that.
Okay, sorry.
Oh, it's not replacing what we have, no.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
You do need the, the Telview, the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Warranty service, then, absolutely.
Tomorrow, Chris, straighten that out with Charles and get, get a quote that gets to some consistent date for all the devices.
Yep.
All right, now.
So we're all, we're good on that? We're gonna, we're gonna extend it to 2024?
I think, I think the committee, and am I wrong? The committee wants to go with Telview and drop Discover at this point?
Absolutely. Sounds fine.
So, and then for the, for the coverage, we want to purchase Telview Care up until 2024 to meet with that same...
To me, yeah, and we have to be careful about that because, because in a way, we do this on grants, that that thing expires probably following the point in time where we get a grant. So we have to get the grant, make sure we apply for the grant in enough time to have it when that thing, you know, expires.
It may not be a bad idea to have a quote for that 2024 Telview Care purchase. I don't know if that's something that we can do.
No, we'll do that in 2023 with that grant line item.
Yeah, I'm just curious how much it's gonna cost us when we're gonna...
Well, it's gonna cost, hopefully, the grant, not us, right?
Uh, well, yeah, excuse me. But I don't, I don't know how they figure that, like, when we...
They'll, they'll figure it out, all right?
All right.
On, because we're taking a lot of time. The next thing on your list was a TriCaster. This is equipment and expenses items. And we have a TriCaster Mini Pro Tech two-year coverage. That's actually for an item that comes later. Oh, that's to renew our current contract, I'm sorry. So we have a TriCaster today and to renew that service contract, and this is for how long, Chris?
Two years.
Two years is for $1,945?
Yep.
Any issues with that?
That's, I put that high on the list because we should probably continue.
We should do that, yeah. Chris, one of the items that Chris and I talked about a few weeks ago was we have an inkjet printer, an old inkjet printer that doesn't work in the OGAAT studio. Chris has brought in one of his old monochrome laser printers to use temporarily. And I said, no, we gotta, you know, take your equipment home and we'll buy our own. So he put, he put down a color laser printer. And at B&amp;H, it's $370, but by the way, they're out of, they're currently backordered. So hopefully, they'll have them soon. It's a Brother laser printer.
You got it on Costco.
What?
They have them at Costco.
Yeah.
300 bucks.
But...
300.
When we buy them at B&amp;H, we get a deal.
Oh.
And that, that leaves me, if you look at the very bottom of the spreadsheet, I added four lines. Those four lines are under Items for Excess Funds slash OGAAT Funds, and it's for, for new, for spare toner cartridges. Each toner cartridge is, each of the color cartridges is like $96, and the black cartridge is like $75. The reason I said excess funds is when we buy stuff from B&amp;H, they give us a discount versus what the web, what you see for a quote on the internet. So we end up always with more money than, we have extra money to spend. So I figured, this is gonna happen with B&amp;H again. We're gonna need cartridges anyway. Let's use the excess funds to buy toner cartridges. That's why they're on the bottom of the list. And if we don't have extra money, we'll use OGAAT funds for extra.
Agreed.
Okay?
All right.
Good on that?
Yep.
Eight-port POE switch. I guess we're running out of space on our current switch.
Yeah.
Is this for on the table or in the studio?
It's for the studio.
Okay.
But the, the TriCaster has a switch that's kind of, it belongs in the kit. So I wanted to get another switch to kind of space some things out.
Fair enough, especially if you're gonna have two people working in the studio.
Yep.
Okay, the next item was a podium for the High Plains Community Center Gym. Okay, the next item was a podium for the High Plains Community Center Gym. Whenever, whenever town meetings and budget hearings and things are held there. Ron has commented many times that a podium, the existing town's podium looks kind of ratty. And we're broadcasting stuff from there all the time. So this was a podium for there. It's about $256.
I love, I love the name of podiums, the Aristocrat.
Aristocrat?
Aristocrat. I mean, does it, if anybody wants to see it, I already Googled it, if you wanna see what it looks like.
Sure.
Pretty manila.
Oh, I didn't realize it has that thing that comes out on the side.
Yeah.
That's nice. Put the town logo on the front.
Nice glass of ice water right there.
Logo.
Chris, is this something we would get from B&amp;H or somewhere else?
I think there's a link on B&amp;H to it.
Okay.
I found it on B&amp;H.
Fair enough.
Okay. We're good on the podium?
Yep.
Okay. No objections, I heard it. Did not hear objection. The next bunch of items that are highlighted in yellow, we bought them already. Using OGAAT funds that we had not spent out of the prior year budget. So they're all gone. So we don't have to buy those. Hard disk storage, so there is a wanna do some more backup our stuff, basically. And so Chris wanted to buy couple of hard disk drives and a housing for the hard disk drives. Those are the next two items on the list. Any comments or questions about that?
We already have two hard disks.
Yeah, but the fun about creating content and 180 meetings a year is you just keep making more, meaning more.
How big are they?
Meetings? I'm guessing they're probably at least a couple gigs apiece.
These are 12 terabytes each drive, right, Chris?
Yep.
That should last a while.
And well, I'm gonna, and I'm gonna mirror it, so they're gonna, they're gonna
It'll be 12 terabytes.
Yeah.
The mirrors, if that means it goes on both at the same time for backup.
The drive, yep.
I do that with my photos. I back up my photos onto a dual drive. It's on both drives. Equipment rack? Roll this new equipment, we need a new equipment rack?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we really do. Where it's coming, it's coming to that time. We're filling up the one that we bought.
And there's room for it in the studio?
Yeah, it's just taller. It's, yep.
Will it just take a place in there, or will it be replacing something else?
It will be, it can replace the one that's there. I, I don't know if I'll have to use the other one. We'll, we'll have to see. I may just use both. And there's, there's enough room to
How many shelves does it have?
Well, it's a
It's 27 rack units.
27 rack units.
27.
27, 27 rack units is 27 inches and a half.
Oh, so, okay.
Each rack unit's an inch and a half.
Oh, that's it? Wait, really? So maybe
Well, we'll use a lot more than, than a few inches.
The one I, I gotta check the one I priced out in there, cause it, the one I'm thinking about is about like seven feet tall.
Yeah, that would be 40 something, cause that, those are much taller.
Here, let me, let me, let me double check which one I put in the list and make sure that I have the right one, cause the one I'm thinking about is a lot bigger.
You probably could put what you have there. And just get rid of the other one.
I'm trying to get something taller to utilize more vertical space, and then I can just replace it.
That'd be good.
Yeah, this is only 54 inches tall.
Okay, let me, let me, let me find the right one then. It, it, that was definitely a mistake. I, I apologize for that.
Yeah, this one's probably close to the same size as the one we have in there.
Okay. Alright, let me, uh, let me look into that. So that's one, that's the correction I need to make to the, to the list.
Mike, you might remember that before you left, there was a seven-foot rack in that room. Back about seven, eight years ago.
You know, shouldn't have gotten rid of it.
I wonder what happened to it, it was empty.
About to say, so I think, like, I mean, if you've gone back in where we used to be.
Yeah.
There's like six racks in a row now.
Is there?
It very well could be one of those. I, I know that's where all the town servers are now.
It was a small one, right? Oh, it's probably in that room then, that.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, fans, check.
Just fancy had a big glass door on it and hold bed.
That's nice. That's the one that I was thinking about purchasing. That's kind of like the one I'm talking about.
Alright, so you, you wanna get a taller one than the one that's in the list right now? You'll send me that tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just to move on, I don't think we have to go find it now.
No, no, I, I was gonna say, I'll send it later.
Yeah, rack fans.
Yep.
Keep things cool. Next thing is a Tri, a, a new, a new TriCaster. And when, I guess this is the latest and greatest version of the one we already have. And we talked about trading in the one we have, because the advertising is you can get up to $2,000 for a trade-in. But last meeting, someone said, why not use the one we have for backup or for off-site? And I think Chris thought that might be actually a better idea.
I agree.
It's a good idea.
If we can do it, I think we should do it.
Any, any other comments on that?
The, the, the number, the cost that's in there right now, that's without the trade-in, right?
That's full price.
Okay.
Full price, including Telview Care of two, for two years.
Yeah.
TriCaster care, yes.
Yeah, Pro Tech.
I'm sorry, uh, new tech, uh,
Pro Tech coverage.
Yep, I got it.
Then you want a wireless mouse. A wireless keyboard, a trackpad. This trackpad is, I think it doesn't know, it's, you say it's for the, for the, for the Mac. And I'm thinking, doesn't the Mac have a trackpad? And I think, no, this is a big trackpad, right?
Yeah, it has a trackpad. It's a low priority thing. If, you know, we're tight, that's could be something that we cut. On there, cause I, I noticed, I, I, I don't know if you noticed, I threw a stand on there.
Yeah, laptop stand. I looked at that today, yeah.
Yeah, it, it, the one I have, I have one similar here, and it's just, you know, with, with our monitor setup, it, it's nice to have this on a stand. And it's just, it's an air, like, I'm, I'm sitting down, I'm editing, like, the, the fireman's interview that I did with the chief. I was editing for about three hours straight. And I like to at least set myself up so I'm ergonomically comfortable. I don't, you know, it, and then if, if I can sort of separate myself from the physical laptop and be, and, and have things like, you know, free to move around, it just makes it more comfortable when I'm spending long amounts of time on the computer. But like I said, the, the keyboard and the, and the mouse are definitely higher priority than the trackpad. If we have to like cut stuff, I wouldn't mind cutting out the trackpad, cause this newer MacBook Pro that we have does have a pretty decent sized trackpad and
Okay, any comments on those? No, leave them in, see, see how much grant we get.
Priority, yeah.
Alright. So the next items are items for improving content and quality and workflow. First item is the Audio Processing Loudness Pro. Uh, this is software from Telview. And I think you said to me, or you texted me last night while we were texting about the volume of the, the show last night, that this would help with volume issues.
Yeah, so like, we, we, we kind of ran into this last night. It was a perfect example of why I really think this could help. You have a, a, a meeting being broadcast live. That's a separate input on the hypercaster. Whenever we switch to our live, uh, we, we switch to that source to stream live, it's always quieter than what our scheduled programming is. So as soon as, I'll, I'll crank up the audio on my TV to, to hear the meeting live. And then as soon as we, as soon as the live meeting ends, and we go back to scheduled programming, the audio is glaringly loud, because the volume's up super high on the TV and the, the pre-recorded programming's just like super, super loud, just naturally. So hopefully the normalize, the, the software that normalizes the audio will correct that and sort of balance things out.
And that's a one-time cost, it's not a yearly subscription or anything?
It's a plugin, it's a one-time cost, yep. So there's no hardware required, it's just a, a feature that's unlocked via a software upgrade.
Okay. No issues with that? Stays in, right? Uh, next item, there's a bunch of items again that we already bought. It was basically of software items. There was a photo editing software. Office Pro.
Oh, so did we buy Office Pro?
Yeah.
And, and, and how was that?
One-year subscription. These are one-year subscriptions.
We didn't get anything, like, any piece of like, was it sent to us physically, or do we have like an electronic subscription?
You said you checked everything on the list. I, I sent, I gave you the, the list of items. You said everything came in. So there may have been a card or something that you used to install it, download it and install it.
We'll have to look into that, because I don't remember.
Go check the boxes and see if there was a, a card that was sent to us.
There wasn't, there wasn't.
Then look on the
You should have gotten an email to the whatever account you used to buy it.
I didn't get an email on my account.
So we'll have to look into that. I just wanted
We'll, we'll check into that.
Yep. For some reason, I didn't even think we, we bought the Office software. I, I, I must have missed that, and I thought we just bought the Parallels and the Photoshop.
I'll check. I'm pretty sure we bought it.
Okay.
But I, I'm, I'll look at the invoice. And we have this Parallels Remote Login Software. Okay, and then next item is video upgrade. And so what, this is the items that Chris added at the last minute today. And basically, we have a camera that is not operating properly. And he'd like to buy a new camera. Which is a, the latest version of a, another camera that we already have. That's, it's a Sony PXW 290V. And it costs $2,598. And with that camera goes all sorts of accessories, a memory stick or two, four memory sticks. A hard carrying case, a battery. Battery charger, adapter cables.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Is, is it a, a smart thing to buy a camera that that's gonna be different from the other ones that we're using already?
Same.
Oh, it's the same?
Last camera we bought.
But it, but it runs the same, and it's not, there's not a big learning curve on it?
No, it's, it's the same functionality.
Okay.
Same battery.
It is 4K.
So this one's 4K, our old ones weren't.
That's the only difference.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, I just, I just, you know, I didn't know if, you know, you, if you want someone to go walk in and use it, and, and, and it, the functionality is different than the other one, then
I totally agree. Yeah, that's why we try to keep them like the same. We've been happy with the Sonys.
Right, okay, good, that's all. Thank you, sorry.
Nope, okay, so that, those are, there's adapter cables, they'll, all go with the camera. Um, then, uh, an LED light kit. Uh, that's for lighting of meetings. I guess we used to have a light kit, but it was the old incandescent lights and people didn't like sitting under them.
It was hot.
And so, um, this, this would be a better solution to that. Um, so there's a light kit, and then there was the stabilizer to replace the, the broken one that we can't use. But that's that section. Any objections or comments on those items? Last item is audio upgrade, and has a wireless combo microphone system. Is this like a lavalier? Chris?
Uh, yep, it's a lavalier. When we did the fireman's, uh, the, the interview with the fire chief, we, we were short one lavalier. We needed two. I figured, why not have two in our studio? We had to borrow one from, um, from the senior senior, Dennis Marsh was nice enough to lend it to us. Uh, I figured it would be good to put on the list.
Okay.
Yeah, it makes sense. Most people have to talk to somebody, just sitting there talking to yourself. You might be like first selectmen or something.
Lavaliers don't last too long if you drop them to, they're dead.
I totally agree. We're, we're very careful with our lavaliers. Luckily, we can replace the microphones. They're replaceable, they're not connected to the physical transmitter or receiver. So that's good, but they're, the microphones themselves are not cheap either, so we try to be really careful.
Yep.
And the last item is a boom microphone.
Yes. Now, if we decide that we need to cut, I would say the first thing to, well, if we had to cut one or the other, I would say we should probably cut the boom mic, unfortunately. Even though I think it would be pretty useful, I think it's more important to have two lavaliers. I think it's a little bit more, having a second lavalier is a little bit more, um, it could be a little bit more applicable than a, than a boom mic in, in our day-to-day use.
No, I mean, it makes sense, the, I mean, the boom mic, you kind of need a second camera operator or a second person to kind of hold the boom mic to really get effective. You could put it on a tripod or something.
Yeah, really.
Not as good as having it just out of frame. But yeah, no, I, I think, i- if we have to, but I think we just leave it on the budget and ask for it. And if, you know, um, the CAC grant decides to give us only partial funding, we'll take that off.
Sorry, we take out, yeah, exactly.
What's your estimated total so far?
So I was actually just looking at that, and I was doing the numbers on Excel. And so you sent me
Alright, I put the totals in at the bottom of the spreadsheet, depending on which option we chose. But you have to subtract off of the total, the amounts we're not getting from Telview, which is, um, what we are getting from Telview instead of like
14, like eight, right?
At $14,000, it's
636.
How much?
Looks like 28,636. So 20, uh, yeah, 28,000 for and I'm, and I added a little bit extra. I added about five, like, I, I took the 7,000 and added about 500 for Telview Care. I don't know if that's accurate.
Alright, yeah, so it's gonna be about 28,000, you think?
Yeah.
We'll have the right number tomorrow.
Give or take, yeah, I mean, so we're looking at
Um, do we wanna ask for labor?
At 28,000 for the equipment, I can almost guarantee you're not gonna get labor.
I agree.
Alright, do we wanna ask for labor?
You can ask, but I'm gonna guarantee.
I think, I think we should put in 2K for labor and see if that, and like we said, we, we could decide what gets cut.
Yeah, last year, last year, I think we asked for 4,000 for labor. And we got it.
Be prepared to pull five to $8,000 out of that.
I agree.
Yep. So what I'm thinking is is, does labor become more of a necessity than some of this gear? Like, is it, do we have to use the CAC grant for some of our labor? Is it?
No. We have town funds for labor, which is, we've used in the history more than it, more than that recently.
Yeah.
Initially, not so much this year because of COVID.
Initially, when these grants were set up, it was only for equipment. Uh, we had to get special permission to use, use it for labor.
Well, actually, we switched that around when we found out that
SoundView is
SoundView was using it for labor, so when
Well, I checked.
Matura did not disagree with that. We said, okay, people can use it for labor.
Yep, alright, so 4K for labor again, see what we get.
Not gonna hurt to ask.
No.
If we have to cut anything, I would say we should probably cut the, the, the TriCaster.
Yeah, which drops us 10K like right off the top, so.
Right, we just cut that completely.
Alright.
Cause we can do without it personally. I think that's things that's kind of like extra.
Well, what happens is, once we get the grant and we see how much we actually have, we, we can have a quick discussion. Well, what happens is once we get the grant and we see how much we actually have, we, we can have a quick discussion.
Let me ask one question.
Another meeting and decide what we're gonna cut, or we can just have a quick discussion with you and Ron and maybe Mike, unless anyone else wants to participate to see what we should cut. Uh, I defer, I would defer to you and Ron, Chris, um.
Mike has a question.
Yeah, one, one quick question. So if we put labor in the budget, right? Is that like a separate line item? Like you can't just take that and put it in a agreement or is it lump sum divvied up how you want?
No, it's divvied up between equipment and labor.
I don't know. Last year, he just gave me a lump sum. He said, do what you want.
Yeah, last year was a little different.
So if we do ask for four thousand labor and we get that, we may have to cut more of our equipment if the, you know, the total stays similar.
Will we, I, I, so, if I'm not, well, tell me if I'm mistaken, but um, we should take the, I mean, we're gonna have a total and we have to decide at that point if we want to put some of it into labor or some of it into our equipment, right? Or most, or all of it into our.
It depends, it depends on how the council decides if they want it separated out or.
Oh, I got you.
As a lump sum. If they want it separated out, then you have to keep the labor part separate.
Right, it has to be used for people.
Yes.
That's what we, that's what I'm worried about. I don't want like lump sum funds.
So if we say four grand, then w- we're basically prepared to, to dedicate four grand of the total to labor at that point if we submit it like that. And then we could just cut the Tricaster.
Yes. I mean, it depends on what the other, it depends on what the other three towns ask for. I mean, you know, like Woodbridge traditionally has not asked for over ten thousand dollars only once because I coerced Pua into actually putting in a, for a real grant. And Fairfield constantly asked for cl- close to fifty thousand. So, you know, they get cut.
Every time.
Every time. Oh, I forgot. Then this Amity is always asking for like twenty to twenty-five thousand and.
Alright.
We only have a hundred to divide, so.
Do we want to ask for labor or not?
If we ask for labor, can we say um, uh, if you're going to cut us at any place, cut the labor first?
We've done that in the past. We've told them, listen, uh, not, kind of informally, we've, we've, we've said.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, if you want to cut us, you know, cut the labor first and then.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe like if there's like somebody listening on, like through the wall or something?
No, no, I, you know.
Or in an opera house or in a art gallery, either or, like, you know, any of these things.
Right, okay, that's what we should do because we should ask for it. Doesn't hurt to ask for it. Maybe, maybe Fairfield only asked for twenty-five thousand this year.
Or five thousand.
Alright. Um, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Before, before you go any further? How come uh, this meeting is being televised on, on uh, channel seventy-nine?
So that's part of the law that um, a part of the emergency order that in order for these meetings to be in Zoom, they have to be publicly broadcast some way.
Okay, I see. Because I was wondering why our other meetings aren't, aren't uh, broadcast.
Because we're, and the cameraman actually participates in the meeting and it's hard to tape yourself.
Okay.
Well, since we've been using, since we haven't been having meetings in Town Hall, it's just a way to get, get the live meeting out to the public. Normally, the, someone could just come in and watch our meeting if they ever so choose to do that, which they don't usually, but.
But to be very clear, that's the mandatory part, that, the.
Actually, it's the Freedom of Information Act that states that the public has the right to participate in any meeting. So by holding these virtual meetings, the governor has said you must broadcast them and supposedly we're supposed to be able to have the public contact us.
Right in.
Public, no, uh, the, the, what the, what the governor's order said was that it has to be available. Right. And they didn't specify how. They had to be available, video or audio or both. They didn't specify how to be on TV, could be just on the internet. Um, we chose to put them on both the internet and uh, we are, are we on YouTube live right now?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, okay. So we're just on channel seventy-nine tonight.
But we're going.
Some of the other meetings, some of the other meetings Chris has done for the town have been on both YouTube and channel seventy-nine as well as Frontier. We're, we're going to channel seventy-nine and Frontier, I think, tonight.
Yep.
And we're not really on V O D, we'll probably be on V O D on the internet and V O D on a, on a website too. Um, but the, basically it was a requirement of the governor's executive order that the meetings be available to the public. Um, you do not have to uh, do anything other than that. Um, just you have to tell the public where to find it. Which we do when we make um, the agenda. If you notice, you read the bottom of the agenda, it tells you where you can watch this program. Alright?
Okay.
And I don't, I don't show YouTube there. I just show channel seventy-nine, channel six oh six three on Frontier TV and internet webcast. Basically, that's the address for Discover Video's um, live stream uh, that I gave.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's no problem.
No, it's a good question. It's probably a good thing to have that, that definition on TV.
Alright, thanks.
How this works.
Okay, um, are there, so we're all, we're all set on this, on the um, on the CAC grant request. Uh, we'll finalize the numbers. Chris will get me the things we don't have, uh, the, or the changes that he's making uh, on the things we agreed to and.
It's just the change on the rack, right? That's it?
Change on the rack and just, uh, I think that's it. If there's anything else, I'll ask you. Um, I think that was it.
Change the number.
Oh, yeah, I got a quote from Telview or vice quote from Telview on what we're getting from Telview, right?
Yes, and, and Mike, like you said, update the numbers to accurately show the total, right? You're saying?
Right, for Telview, it won't be fourteen, it'll be closer to eight.
Yep. Yeah, I'll, yeah, we'll do that. I'll do that. Um, I have to do that anyway before I make the grant, so. I'll, I'll mail that out there. I'll email that out to. Alright, that it for that item? We'll move on. The last, the last two items are the equipment inventory. Uh, Chris and I updated the equipment inventory for the items that we bought that were highlighted in yellow. Um, and then um, town talk, as I said before, nothing has, was done due to the COVID situation. Um, are there any other questions or comments from the committee? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mike made the motion, seconded by.
Gary.
Harry. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Alright.
Night, everybody.
Good night.